All right, the time is 4:31. We'll call together the October 21st, 2019 City Planning Commission hearing. My name is Sam Rockwell, I serve as President of the City Planning Commission. I'm joined by Commissioners Brown, Kogel, Coman, Suesi, Lepkepear, Schrader, Wilson, and Kronzer. Our first order of business is to adopt the minutes and actions of the October 7th, 2019 City Planning Commission hearing. Do I have a motion?
A motion and a second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next order of business, we do not have any, maybe the whole business today. Next order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's hearing. We will walk through the agenda for the folks here today. If you wish to testify against a staff recommendation or to modify a staff recommendation, please speak up, raise your hand. Otherwise, we will potentially place that item on consent. So the first item on the agenda is the Starbucks in office development at 4159 Hiawatha Avenue in Ward 12. We will discuss item number one. Item number two is Curry Park 404, 420 15th Avenue South and 1417 South 5th Street in Ward 6. We will continue this item indefinitely. Item number three, somewhere, Satori 817, 819, 821, and 825 West Broadway Avenue and 1828, 1830, 1832, 1836, and 1838 Bryant Avenue North in Ward 5. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing no one, we'll place item three on consent. Item number four is the Herbert at 1200 Central Avenue Northeast in Ward 1. We'll return all the applications for item number four. Item number five is 2325 East 38th Street, 3812 24th Avenue South in Ward 12. We will continue this item to November 4th, City Planning Commission hearing. Item number six is Gloria's Place 1111, 22nd Street West in Ward 7. A conditional use permit there. Is anyone here to speak on item number six? Seeing no one, we will place item number six on consent. Item number seven is Bakery Production Facility, 701 West Broadway in Ward 5. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will place item number seven on consent. Item number eight is Calhoun Parkway Residences at 3814 West Vemecoska Parkway, Ward 13. Non-conforming use expansion. Is anyone here to speak on item number eight? Seeing no one, we'll place item number eight on consent. Item number nine is Metro Transit Hayward 2 Bus Garage, 600, 608, and 612, 8th Avenue North, 550 10th Avenue North, 1000 and 1010 Lyndale Avenue North, 800 to 812 North 7th Street and 804 7th Street, 7th and a half Avenue North, Ward 5. That's a lot of streets for one garage. Is anyone here to speak on all of those addresses? No, seeing none. We'll place that on consent. Item number 10, Friendship Academy, 3320 41st Street East in Ward 12. Conditional use permit there and a variance. Is anyone here to speak on item number 10? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 10 on consent. Item number 11 is the Brick House Lofts, 150 26th Avenue Southeast in Ward 2. Is anyone here to speak on item number 11? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 11 on consent. Item number 12 is North Central University Academic Commons, 1401, 1413, and 1425 Chicago Avenue in Ward 6. We will continue this item to the November 4th, City Planning Commission hearing. Item number 13 is 623 Taylor Street Northeast in Ward 3. A number of variances and a minor subdivision there. Is anyone here to speak on item number 13? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 13 on consent. Item number 14, Jackson Lofts, 750 to 756 Jackson Street Northeast in Ward 3. We will continue item number 14 to the November 4th, City Planning Commission hearing. Item number 15 is zoning code text amendment, and it is amending the provisions to create intentional communities and cluster developments to provide affordable housing options for residents for either housing stable or unstable. It will allow an amendment, a configuration of small dwellings or rooming units in a common house on a lot, and a common house on a lot. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to item number 15? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 15 on consent. Commissioners, we have the following agenda. We will discuss item number one on consent will be items numbers 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 15. We will continue indefinitely item number two, continue until November 4th. Items number 5, 12, and 14, and return item number four. Could I have a motion to, yes Commissioner Kronzer? A motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have discussion. We have a comment.
On the consent agenda, I need to recuse myself of number nine, the Metro Transit Bus Garage, as Metro Transit is my employer.
Very good. Financial stake in our transit system. Do we have other comments up here? No. We all have a financial stake, but you in particular. Duly noted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, and I would like to have a motion, I suppose we should do this, do we need to do a separate motion to return?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So we'll do a separate motion to continue item number two indefinitely.
A motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Motion to continue until November 4th, items number 5, 12, and 14. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, and a motion to return item number four of those applications. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll open the public hearing on the consent agenda. Is anybody here to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
A motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right. With that, we are moving on to our public hearing. I'd like to recognize both the folks that came here for the zoning code text amendment, I think a number of them walked out, and the Lego League team that is here to listen to this planning commission hearing. Item number one is Lindsay Silas. The floor is yours.
Good evening Commissioners. The project before you is an application at 4159 Hiawatha. You saw this last year when it came through with a very similar site plan, but it was proposed to have three stories of residential units above. So the applicant has come back with a new application to establish two single-story buildings on the lot in a very similar configuration to what was approved last year. This site is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Hiawatha and 42nd. The proposal has a Starbucks drive-through at the interior of the site with a liner building that is kind of up to the street level. So staff is recommending approval of the application. There is limited alternative compliance requested. This is a project that was deemed complete before the city council passed the ban on all new drive-throughs, and so it was allowed to continue through a staff direction. And the application here, the site plan is very similar to what was proposed last year, so staff is recommending approval. Initially, this project, because it came through last year for approvals, over a year ago at this point, they had submitted for PDR even prior to that, and so this same PDR, preliminary development review application has been open for over a year. And so as this project has come through for a new planning commission application, staff has had subsequent conversations with Public Works about some of the possible concerns at the site, especially with regards to the drive-through component. Here's a rendering of the proposed building, and this is from the parking lot side. So there have been some significant issues with similar types of uses in the city in the last year since this project initially went to PDR, including the Starbucks on Cedar, which has significant traffic impacts on adjacent streets and uses. And even with Aldi on Lyndale allowing left turns into and out of the site has caused issues for such a high-traffic street. And so due to those conversations, Public Works and planning staff are recommending two conditions of approval that would restrict left turns into and out of the site. Those include that the signage, curb cut, and driveway access should be designed to prevent left turns into and out of the site, and that the applicant shall work with Public Works to modify the street design of East 42nd to prohibit left turns into the site. Those are the two conditions that the applicant wished to discuss today. So I've just shown an aerial view here. East 42nd Street in this location is only one lane heading east, and it's not far from the intersection with Hiawatha. So the concern here is that there's no left turn lane that would access the proposed curb cut on the site, and the concern is that traffic would be waiting to turn left, and also traffic wishing to go straight would get backed up behind any left-turning traffic and would potentially impede the intersection at 42nd and Hiawatha. So today, the applicant did submit a new design, so this project initially had been slated to go to the planning commission meeting that was two cycles ago. The applicant requested a continuance and then requested another continuance to continue working with Public Works to propose some potential changes to public right-of-way to allow left turns into and out of the site. And I have Alan from Public Works Traffic who's going to give a brief presentation after mine here to kind of discuss how those conversations have gone. But basically, even this new proposal that was just submitted today, staff has serious concerns about some of the elements, which include removing pedestrian right-of-way and boulevard area on the south side of the street, and reconfiguring the street to be wider, and also reconfiguring the north side of the street. So until today, staff could not continue the application any further due to 120-day decision period considerations, although they have now extended the decision period. So if the planning commission did wish to continue, that is now a possibility. So staff is recommending approval of this proposal with the 10 stated conditions, two of which have to do with not allowing left turns into and out of the site. And I will stand for questions.
Commissioners, are there questions of staff? Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, the staff report mentioned some submitting, some supporting material that talked about how the building's designed to support nine additional floors. I didn't see any of that in our packets. Do you happen to have that?
I don't, I don't know that there was any, like, engineering drawings or anything submitted for that.
Have you received something from the applicant?
I think all that I have received from the applicant was their statement, which indicated that that would be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Coman.
Perhaps Public Works is going to talk about this, but I need some explanation of that last slide that you put up, whether it's you Lindsay or Public Works. I don't understand it.
This one?
Yep?
I can leave it up and have Alan talk to it. This is kind of the proposal that they had just submitted earlier today, you know, hoping to potentially come to a solution with regards to left turns at the site, but I'm happy to kind of kick it over to Alan here.
Commissioners, further questions of staff? Seeing that is down there, Commissioner Kogel, not, that's not a question, all right. Very good. Yes, come on up Alan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, and I'd like to use the overhead projector, you have a couple graphics.
Yeah, just pop it right on there.
Just a few comments to expand on what Lindsay has already said today. And again, I'll get used to this. I'll reintroduce myself. My name's Alan Klugman, I'm a traffic engineer with the Traffic and Parking Services Division in Public Works. And just to add a little bit to what Lindsay already spoke with today, you know, one of the key initiatives that we have going on with the city right now is our safety initiatives, known as Vision Zero. And I'll just tell you that in the last year or so, and moving on into the future, I've never had as much influence in my career, it's a very long career, with notions around safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, cars, for all modes. And everything we do now is really informed by a safety lens, even much more so than it has historically been. And one of the key things we look at are the multi-lane roadways where we have a lot of, a lot of problems frankly, and that's where a lot of our focus has been. And when we saw this application come through here recently, we really looked at it very, very strictly through a safety lens. And I want to reference two words that we use a lot. One word is reactive, when we talk about safety, one word is proactive. And kind of as the name implies, a reactive situation is where we have a problem out in the transportation network, and we try to mitigate it or fix it. The other word is proactive. In that case, we try to build in the most safe, proper design from the get-go before a problem develops. We don't wait for the problem to occur, we try to design in best practices. And that's really what this is all about. Public Works' current comments on this are all from a safety perspective. And kind of just briefly echoing some of what Lindsay said, Hiawatha is one of our major crash corridors. We have a major road, 42nd Street, with the proposed access to the site very close to the intersection of 42nd and Hiawatha. Very short queuing distance, very high queues and delays from the signal heading back to the east, especially with the disruption caused by the LRT. And we really saw that there was no good way to fit in left turns. So I want to be very clear about this, although I'm sure the applicant will speak and will talk about the sketch that proposes a way to achieve left turns. Our perspective from Public Works is not about tweaking a design to try to fit in left turns, it's more about positively prohibiting them. And if we look back at the two conditions that Lindsay referenced, the first condition, and I won't repeat it word for word, but essentially that was a condition that said only right in and out to the site, no left turns in and out. And then the second condition, we sort of layered on top of that, and that was to say that if the driveway that could be designed, if we felt, if Public Works felt that that driveway did not positively prohibit left turns in and out, then we wanted to go to that second condition was work with us and Public Works in the right-of-way to put a, you know, a median or what have you, different channelization that positively prohibits the left turns. I'll just give you one quick reference, Lindsay referred to it, but the Aldi site on 26th and Lyndale, which has been open about two months, that first condition, don't allow lefts in and out, we had that condition in there, and I'll kind of say shame on us in Public Works. We approved the driveway, you know, hoping that it would prohibit customers coming in and out. We didn't have that second condition that said work with us afterwards. And what we're seeing out there today, again, the store's been open less than two months, we're having so many problems out there that we're actively moving to address that right now. And just give you a quick little sketch here, just as an illustration of the types of things we might have to look at. Not meant to be a final answer or anything, but just for illustration, as we're looking on Lyndale, you know, again, we don't have that catch-all that says work with us upfront to design it, so we're now left as Public Works to go out and solve a problem. And this is a case, different location, but we have a little problem, we put a bollard, it's something we could do quick, you know? But it's a type of thing that says what can we do to prohibit left turns? And I'd just be very careful to say that, again, just kind of close by saying here that I think the right way to achieve safety to a project like this is designing it from the get-go. It's not about tweaking it or fixing it later on. If the project were to go forward with left turns allowed, I guarantee you this will be on the top of our radar screen, we're going to keep a pretty tight eye on it. And if something were to develop with the situation, we would then go out after the fact, like we're going to do at Aldi's, and do something positively in the right-of-way that prohibits those left turns. Again, I'd rather be upfront with it at the beginning, I'd rather work with the applicant to come up with a situation that prohibits those movements right from the get-go. Thank you. And maybe if I could add one more question here. I know there were some sketches sent to us in the past couple weeks to try to address this left turn, but again, I just want to repeat, our invitation was not to give us sketches that show how left turn could be made, it's to work with us if you need to to show us how you're going to prohibit those left turns. And the sketches we received, you know, they were sketch level, very hard to react to those, several impacts due to trying to achieve those. But again, just say with the high volume on 42nd, the backups from the signal, any design that provides a left turn is going to widen the street, not something we're looking to do today. It's going to force drivers coming through the intersection to have to immediately make a left turn or get caught in what we call a trap lane. I can't think of another location in the city where you have the leftmost lane immediately coming through a major intersection, becomes a trap to left turn. So I'm sure the applicant can speak to that, but I just wanted to tell you, there's reasons like that why, we looked at this very carefully within our traffic shop, we saw no good solution to provide left turns, and that's why we're very firm in positively prohibiting them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Coman.
If we could go back to the sketch that was submitted today, and I have a question for you. Can you move it to the computer? To the sketch that was submitted by the applicant.
Yeah, can you, can you show the computer?
I cannot, but it's happening.
This one, right, Commissioner?
Correct. And I do appreciate your explanation of philosophy and the reasons for that philosophy. I would like, you talked about it in general terms that led you to no left turns.
Yep.
Can you talk about it in specific terms related to this sketch and the safety concerns that you have?
Yeah, absolutely. So Chair, members of the commission, regarding that question, a couple things, maybe in no particular priority order, but just some things we thought about. One thing that comes to mind is it's really difficult when we get into a numerical battle, you know, my view, their view, et cetera, et cetera. What I do know from coffee shops, they're notorious for having very high peaking characteristics. The peak of the coffee shop coincides with the peak of the roadway network, and that's when 42nd is very busy. So in operation of 42nd, we frequently see queues on there, very long. In fact, they have a photo I could show, but I brought some photos with me just to be ready. One of them is just my standard city aerial, which is just taken at a random time, and at that time, the cars are extending beyond his property. So it's very hard to predict when that will happen, especially with the impact from the trains. And so a couple things, so with the long queues, there doesn't, there's not an opening for cars to turn in there, and we don't go with signs like do not block intersection, those just don't work. So one thing is the concern of the long queue. The second thing I would say is, in the intersection design, there's about 110, 115 feet of storage distance for the left turns. If we were to go with some kind of design that allows left turns, I'm very concerned about that length, because when you get the peak rush at the coffee shop, and if you have a backup on 42nd that doesn't let cars in, that's not enough space to store. And then probably my last point, I think my most important point to make, is this is not a standard design by any means, whereas if we follow from west to east through this major intersection, I'll be trapping cars in that leftmost lane where they're forced to turn into the coffee shop, and then the cars going through have to kind of wiggle around them, and the cars going northbound on Hiawatha and then making the right through that island area, they don't really have a landing area. So it's a very, I'd say, you know, creative approach on the applicant's part to try to solve it, I respect that, but it doesn't get us over the hurdle of saying this is an inherently unsafe design at a major signalized intersection with high volumes. So hopefully I was specific enough, Commissioner? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lepkepear.
Yeah, I had a brief question. If you could just address between the difference between what we viewed before versus this, which we are seeing today, what is the distance from curb to curb, and how much did that change from previous iterations? And then maybe discuss what you think the pedestrian impact might be?
Sure. And I'm sorry, Chair and members of the commission, I didn't hear the very first part of your comment.
Just the change between what we're seeing in the screen today versus what was previously proposed in terms of what's the travel distance for a pedestrian from having to cross that extended? It changed or no?
Oh yeah, yeah, the intersection gets wider by a lane approximately 11 feet, 12 feet. Yeah, but it widens the pedestrian crossing distance? Yeah, is that, am I answering that? Yep, yep. So it essentially goes from being a 1, 2, 3, 4 lane road to a 5 lane road? Yep.
And then will that impact the lights at all with allowing for time for people to cross, or is that not?
Yeah, no, no, it does. So Hiawatha signals are like their home, whole other topic, but make a long story short, the signals run in what we call a free mode. When the train goes by, it preempts the signal and overtakes the signal, and then the signal needs to recover from it. Seconds are very valuable in that operation because the train takes a lot of time away from us. We will have to add additional time because we put in about 3, 3 and 1/2 seconds per foot of walking speed for pedestrians crossing the road. So as my road gets wider, I do put in more time for the pedestrian, which takes away some of the flexibility with the train response. Yep. And plus, you know, inherently longer crossings are more problematic for pedestrians, we're doing everything we can in the city to reduce those crossing lengths.
Commissioners, any further questions? Thank you very much. With that, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and introduce yourself and fill us in. Thanks.
My name is Nick Bustalis. I'm the owner, operator, and the developer of that location. And to appreciate the development process, I'm going to walk you through some history on this project. First of all, we've been there for 34 years, and we have multiple locations, and this is probably one of our more profitable ones. We started the development back in 2014, looking at hundreds, literally hundreds of concepts, talking potential tenants, and we came up with this two-building concept that you see here. This plan was deemed compliant, except we had one alternative compliance request in our submission. I wonder if it's loading the photos. So in March of 2018, we went before the committee of the whole, the planning commission, and really all the comments we received were negative. And in fact, I think one or two individuals said, even if this was totally compliant, we would not approve it unless we added housing. So in the 80s, myself and my former partner developed a whole bunch of for sale housing in Minneapolis. The project in the upper left-hand corner is E Stiles, it's on 27th and Humboldt, it won a Q Award back in the early 80s. We developed Boardwalk and Park Place, that was on the Minneapolis Housing Redevelopment Authority Annual Report for a couple years that I recall. We developed the lakes over by Lake Calhoun, and we developed the old West High School Sky. So we have plenty of experience developing housing in the city. So the input we got was basically add housing because that's what the city's looking for, and we did. And we obviously received, in May of 2018, the staff recommended our plan for approval. The planning commission unanimously approved the project you see here. And there were no restrictions on left turn in or out of the site. So back in the spring of this year, we submitted our plan for plan development review, and in that process of from 2018 to 2019, we concluded that we couldn't fill the housing in the time period required in the two-year window of time we had for the conditional use permit. So we submitted our plans with the exact same plan, which is in two phases, the first floor, and then the three floors above it for housing. So all departments reviewed these plans, even Public Works, and except for planning, they all, all the issues were resolved. There were no restrictions on left turn in or out of the site, and the planner said we had to go back through planning because we have only phase one, we're building. So we submitted a new plan, or application for first floor only. It's totally compliant with zoning, and there are no variances, and we are actually even putting in the infrastructure for utilities, footings, foundations, beams, so that we can build the housing on top when we think the market's ready for it. On September 18th, the planning department issued On September 18th, the planning department issued a report with eight conditions on it, okay, which are all agreeable to us. Again, no restrictions on left turn in and out of the site. On the next day at 427, we receive an email that says we're adding these two items, nine and 10. Okay? And this was, and even though all the plans we've submitted before, there was never an issue with left turn in or out of the site. So because this was two days before the planning commission meeting on September 23rd, we asked for an extension so we could hire a traffic engineer, which you will hear from after, during this presentation. Here are the challenges we faced with coming up with a solution. First of all, Alan Klugman would not meet with us in person or meet with the traffic engineer. It had to be done by email. Okay? We sent Alan three hand sketches of alternatives and not once did we receive any substantive feedback or suggestions. We obviously asked for another extension because, you know, working via email makes it a little more time consuming. We hired another, because they wanted to see an engineering drawing, we hired another consultant to draw up the plan that you saw a little bit ago. And we, last week, we asked for an extension so that the public works department would hopefully review it and agreed to meet with us and see if we could work out a solution. But the planner turned us down. And earlier today, we submitted all of the information that we said would be ready today, which is why we asked for the extension last week. So now I would like to introduce Vern Swing of Swing Traffic Solutions to discuss the solution we have come up with. And unfortunately...
Can we just get the figure back up?
What's that?
Maybe just get the figure back up.
Sure, I think I can get, I have a PowerPoint that I can maybe open up that will work instead of this PDF.
While he's working on that, Mr. Chair members of the Commission, my name is Vernon Swing. I am the President and CEO of Swing Traffic Solutions. And...
That's it there.
That's close enough. And as has been articulated a couple of different ways, there's, there, the two conditions were added to the, the conditions for approval were added to the, to the item, or the items were added to the conditions of approval at the, sort of at the last minute and at which point, you know, I've been brought in to look at what's going on out here and why this might be something that's a concern. Independent from having any discussions with Alan, I recognize that there's an opportunity for vehicles to stack from the driveway back toward the intersection with Hiawatha and suggested that, to the proponent, that we attempt to come up with something that would potentially address that. I don't know if, let's see, it's hard to work here without my, without my PowerPoint. But essentially the idea, there's some number of cars that back from, from the driveway back towards that and when one car is waiting, anybody that's headed eastbound will also wait and propagate back towards Hiawatha. So we looked at a couple of different things. We did shoot some ideas off to Alan with, for, to try and gain, get some feedback. Ultimately, we just, we've come in with this particular solution that creates a left turn storage area. It is, it is perhaps a little unusual. On the other hand, let's, this is, this is a major metropolitan area and in major metropolitan area, there are occasionally different traffic solutions that you see out there while you're driving. Lanes pick up, lanes drop off. People who are out here commuting in the, in the peak times, particularly in the morning, they're going to know exactly what they're doing when they drive through here. We're not getting, we're not getting a half a percent of people that don't know what's going on at this intersection. So...
Vern, I have that now up here.
Have you got it up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can go to this. If you could switch to...
So, all right, let's see.
Use the arrow on this.
The down arrow?
Yeah, or any arrow, this right hand arrow.
Okay, thanks. So what we did is we looked at this and we said, okay, what, what will work? What's, number one, let's analyze this for how, how it actually operates today, not taking, not having any use on the site, just how Hiawatha operates and how this leg to the Hiawatha intersection operates. And indeed, there are large queues that go to the east. There is an existing use on the site. The existing use on the site generates a fair amount of traffic, particularly in the winter as people want to get the salt off their vehicles. There are 102 trips in and out of the site in the peak times, AM and PM. With the new use that's being proposed, that number actually is going to go up in the morning and it's going to be way less in the afternoon. So when you look at the two, you're balancing something that's already there with two driveways against a new project with one only driveway, which is a benefit, further away from, from Hiawatha, which is a benefit. And, and you're looking at, you're, we're looking at a situation that's in an urban area where people will very quickly understand the pattern necessary to drive their vehicle. As far as the crosswalk extension, yes, it's approximately six feet longer to cross. However, it's a little disingenuous to say that the train crossing is, is causing, is going to have the Hiawatha, you know, the crossing of 42nd extended beyond the number of seconds necessary to deal with the Hiawatha traffic. That traffic is essentially free flowing while the train is there. So there is a long period of green that pedestrians get to, get to make their cross during. The, so as we look at this, we looked at the, we looked at the operations in the morning, you know, in a, in a snapshot, in the morning, the level of service on, at the intersection is at C. However, some of the approaches are fairly, with long queues, have fairly long delays. So, you know, it's kind of hard to, who gets, who gets the benefit? Well, Hiawatha gets the benefit. They operate at a better level of service than, than the side street does. When we looked at it then and put in the left turn lane and reanalyzed it, it didn't change the operations at, at the Hiawatha and 42nd intersection, but it did allow for the driveway to operate at level of service C and it did allow for that left turn movement to operate at level of service B with only 12.2 seconds of, of delay. At the same time, the queuing of the vehicles was predicted, this is a 95th percentile queue or one that has a 5% chance of occurring. The queuing of the vehicles is estimated at 75 feet. We're providing 112 feet for people to make that left turn maneuver and to stack if necessary. So we, you know, we'd like to have an opportunity to discuss this a little further with, with public works and, and also discuss some of the benefits that this, that this approach does provide and this project does provide. Number one, we reduce that conflict point at the west driveway by just eliminating that driveway. We, that also makes it easier for pedestrians that are walking across the sidewalk. They don't have to cross two driveways, they only have to cross one. We looked at how the traffic flows across Hiawatha today. It's a fairly wide crossing and, and it's not, today it's not straight across. You actually have to bend a couple of, you know, you bend one direction or bend the other direction depending on which way you're going to, to fit within the geometry that's there. This will in fact line the lanes up better than it is today. Project itself, if we were able to go forward with this, there are a lot of things that have to happen. Water hydrant has to move, utility poles have to move, the expansion is essentially on our side of the road with a little bit on the south side, just moving the curb back a little. There is room to do that. It's, and it's, it's existing within the right of way that, that is currently owned on 42nd. So we'd just like to, you know, if we had the opportunity, whoops, if we had the opportunity, we would like to continue working or start working with city staff to see if we can come up with a solution for this.
I just have a few more slides and then we'll open up to questions. On page 37 of the staff report, you'll see this response that Andrew Johnson gave to someone that was opposing the development and it really responds to what has happened and how we've tried to respond when we were asked things. So as he states here, we added housing even though we didn't have to, although it felt like it was a mandatory thing. In June of 2019, when we concluded we could not do the housing in the first two years, Andrew asked us to reach out to some developers. He gave us names. We actually reached out a total of 18 housing developers and all of them either passed or showed no interest in building housing there right now. Okay? And it's not that housing, housing will happen on that site, it's just we can't do it in the first two years and be successful at it. And then when we got these last two-minute, let's say, criteria added to the approval request, items nine and 10, we went out and hired two consultants to try to work on a solution, even though we really didn't get much help from the city and the staff. So you might be asking yourself, what guarantee do we have building, that we're going to build housing at some point in the future? Well, first of all, we're a for-profit developer. More space means more revenue, okay? As long as we can fill it. And we wouldn't be putting in the money into the infrastructure of the property if we weren't going to build phase two. Okay? And furthermore, according to one of the commissioners that made mention, the city's 2040 plan, if it's approved, will allow us to add another nine stories on the site, not just the three stories we're adding. So we would like to take advantage of that if that gets approved and the market is ready for housing on the site. And a question I have for you is, do you want developers to respond to input and incorporate the city's vision? It's an open-ended question and I'll open up to any questions you all have for either Vern or myself.
Commissioners, are there questions? The applicant. Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering if, if left turns were outright physically prohibited into the site through median or some other way, how do you feel that traffic would enter the site from Hiawatha? Would, and maybe this is a question for your traffic engineer, but would they circle the block and come back westbound?
No, it would, it would effectively kill the retail on the site is what it would do. Because they need, any retailers coming here, whether it's a coffee shop or whatever, would want to be able to draw that traffic off of Hiawatha to come to the site to visit their store.
So you're saying the project is simply not feasible if left turns are prohibited into the site?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Kronzer, then Commissioner Coleman, and then Commissioner Schrader.
I have a couple of questions about the proposed building. It looks like there's an architecture firm that's designed to be in this office space that's lining between Hiawatha and the drive-through. Do you have a lease for this space?
That would actually be, that would actually be our offices.
Your offices?
My business offices, yes.
Okay.
And Oxyos was the name of the apartment property that we gave it a long time, last year or so. Is that what you were looking at, the Oxyos thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's very clearly laid out in the plans. My next question is, where is the entry to the future residential portion of this?
It is right on the corner that you see where the, you know, you get the tall pillar there, the entry is right there.
So that would take up part of the office space?
It would actually, we would be actually probably downsizing and, and using that because right now that will be the space for the apartments when we build it. So we'll move out in that event.
To the office, okay, that makes sense. Now building nine more stories to this building is going to impact the retail components that are on the site. You're certainly going to have to stage construction, you're going to have disruption. You know, have you written into your leases that you're allowed to remove parking stalls during construction to provide limited access?
We've talked to the, we've talked to the tenants and they are willing to close their store down until we finish construction and then reopen.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about how you've upsized your footings and your, your columns and how you would provide fire separation between the retail and the office should you build the office, or sorry, the housing components above?
So Richard Andron, the architect on those housing projects is here. I'll let him answer that question.
BKBM is our structural engineer and associate architect for the project is at Foreign Associates and they're experienced in building projects that are phased and have floors added to them at subsequent periods of time after the first phase is done. Primary example is Fairview Hospital and Maple Grove, which they built the first, I think it was three stories and then three or four years later, they built an additional story and then, or two, and then a couple of years later, they added the last couple of stories. And this is a hospital and it kept operating, you know, during the time of construction. So it's a, it's a, it's a ballet that has to be choreographed and so we would just hire, you know, we have experienced people on this team that have done that before.
So how specifically in this project would you add floors?
The footings, columns and beams required to support, you know, whatever stories we project, whether it's three more stories or five more, you know, the, apparently, you know, in the 2040 plan, there's the potential possibly of up to 10 stories, a 10-story building in that site along the Hiawatha corridor. So that's just, that's a maximum, okay? The, whatever, whatever, you know, basically ultimately the developer decides is the, you know, optimum or the most feasible expansion for the future, will make some kind of decision onto what level of structure is necessary to support, you know, whatever it is, six stories, seven stories, you know, up to nine stories of additional height. So it's just an engineering, you know, it's just an engineering problem. You just have to size the footing, size the beam, size the columns appropriately. The infrastructure for the apartments as far as utilities is, is also taken into consideration.
So what I'm hearing is there's no specific plan to increase the number of stories at this point?
Not, not today, no. There's not a specific plan.
It's not, it's not allowed at the moment unless the 2040 plan gets approved. At least that's my understanding.
I'm pretty sure housing is allowed on the site.
Commissioner Coleman.
I did not, I'm a visual person. I did not follow your response to Commissioner Kronzer on how the future potential housing would be accessed. Could you use the mouse and show us on this or whichever slide is most?
So this is probably the part where I did not... So, this is probably the part where I did not, it wasn't working for me. Here. The red lines represent the first phase of what we're building. And there's three floors of housing, which is, this is our 2018 plan that got approved. And so, that is in essence what it is.
And that's not the question I'm asking. Could you go to a site plan?
Site plan. I will have to go to...
You should ask me where the main entrance is next, at the corner.
Oh, it's right here is the main entrance, you see?
And I guess, maybe I am not, maybe it wasn't the same question. So, will the future housing residents be accessing the site through the same curb cut that we're talking about right now?
Correct.
Okay. Then the question that I have perhaps for your traffic consultant is, the level of service that was described and the queuing distance that was described, did that take into account future housing accessing that? And I assume that would be an increased number of cars accessing it during certain times of day?
Yes, that was looked at as well. In the, in the morning, when, when the Starbucks will have the greatest number of customers arriving is when, is essentially when the residents will be leaving. So, they will not be part of the queue that's on the, on the street for the most part. And that's about a 70/30 mix. The, the 43 apartment units in, in the AM peak time, the ITE numbers suggest, Institute of Transportation Engineers numbers suggest it's .36 vehicle trips per unit for the AM peak and .44 for the PM peak. So, the .3 times 43, you know, roughly 13. And then, and then you split that 70/30, 70% exiting, 30% entering, you really don't have very many people coming in and adding to that queue. I did look at that. It's insignificant as far as whether just the, just the first floor development at this point is 74.7 feet of queue. I rounded up to 75. When you have the residential on top, you're at like 75.2. It's still roughly 75.
Just one more question. I do recognize that there has been a lot of discussion over a lot of years and I think I heard, and I'd like to just clarify, that there is an opportunity for this discussion to potentially continue, that there's not a hard stop. And Lindsay, am I characterizing what you said correctly?
The, so the 120-day window is expiring. The applicant had already continued it to be continued to this meeting. They have continued it one more cycle, so it could be continued one more cycle. So, yes, that is now a possibility if, if that was, if that was the wish of the commission. I would also note that, you know, any future continuations, this is a situation where, you know, for any future considerations or delays, the applicant has to voluntarily extend the 120-day decision period with each one.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thank you. Just, so if I hear you correctly, just requiring the right turn, prohibiting the left turn will make this project unfeasible?
Correct.
So, I also am hearing that you have no, no plan right now for how much, you're going to add the footings and all the extra things you need for extra floors, but right now you have no plan for how much that is?
Well, we know it'll be at least three floors, 43 units, because that's what we proposed. But given that Minneapolis 2040 plan may come into existence, that'll allow us to add more floors and we will take a look at that, at that point, well, you know, we'll take a look at it before we start construction and say, hey, let's design the structure for six stories or whatever we, we think we can market.
Could you give me an estimate of like what the difference in construction cost might be from, you know, right now one story to nine story? I imagine that's a pretty big gap. And where I'm going with this is for you to say that this is an unfeasible project because of a left turn lane, when you don't have a plan for how big the construction cost could go, makes me very much doubt that statement.
Can you repeat that? Sorry?
Basically, I'm saying if you don't know how high you're going to try and build your building and you don't know the construction cost for adding all the things, the added cost of materials that you'll have to put in a three-story or a six-story or a nine-story, to say that the turning lane is the thing that's going to make this unfeasible makes me question, you know, that because that's, my guess is that's going to be a pretty substantial cost. And so saying that that's not, seeing that that's not factored into your equation makes me pretty doubtful. And I would also add that there's, in my own ward that I represent, the Starbucks was added across from a Caribou and all that happened was, southbound traffic goes to Starbucks and northbound goes to Caribou. And so it's, it's something that, it also made a not great intersection really bad.
Sure.
And so I think that's what's at stake here and I think that that's where I think this is a very serious concern from the city standpoint.
Sure, okay. So, when I said it would kill the development, it would kill the retail portion, okay? Because retailers need customers, okay? There are no drive-through coffee shops in this general area, so it's not the case of putting Starbucks across the street from Caribou, which when I heard that, I thought that was kind of crazy personally. We have 21 stacking spots on our site for a drive-through, which is way more than anyone's going to want to wait in, in line. So, and that doesn't go out into the street. You heard Vern talk about the fact our left turn lane is 112, 113 feet and to meet the 95th percentile of possible cars waiting to turn in, you only need 75 feet. So we have plenty of room to not only take those left-hand turns, but for people turning off of Hiawatha and going on 42nd eastbound, they'll have room to navigate around because the cars aren't going to be coming out to the street to do that. So no one's going to get blocked in that left turn lane, okay? And so, I think it's a great solution. We're glad to work with the, if the Public Works is willing to work with us, we're, we'd be glad to work with them, okay, to come up with a solution.
Commissioner, come here.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. One of your people mentioned that in the, in the future, when you have the residential, residents will be leaving in the morning and people will be coming in to get coffee. I was just wondering, where are you planning on putting parking for your residential, whether it's three stories or nine stories?
Well, the plan that we submitted last year for the 43 units envisions no resident parking, okay? So we're looking to light, you know, into a ride-sharing, you know, light rail, you know, type of user. And these are micro apartments, so they're not meant for, you know, necessarily with people's cars.
Answer my question, thanks.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Sure.
We will open the public hearing for anybody else who wishes to testify. Is there anybody here wishing to testify from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have one application before us with 10 conditions. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move denial of item A, the site plan review.
We've motioned to deny site plan review. Do we have?
Second.
A second, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Brown, would you speak on your rationale?
Yes, I will. My concerns with this proposal relate really solely to the traffic circulation, which is one of the criteria we have to evaluate a site plan. It seems that Public Works staff is really insistent on not allowing left turns into the site. Even if they were, it seems that adding a left turn lane would certainly require widening of the intersection of 42nd and Hiawatha, which presents a more dangerous pedestrian situation at an already wide intersection that isn't particularly pedestrian-friendly in the first place. I think if we're, if left turns were physically prohibited into the site, that would create a very problematic traffic circulation pattern. People would be circling around through the neighborhood. So I, I have some pretty consistent, some pretty significant concerns. I know the applicant pointed out that there was a previous proposal that had been approved that had a driveway there, but, you know, our evaluation of this really relies on Public Works staff's recommendations and those recommendations can evolve over time. As the, as staff pointed out, there have been some recent high-volume traffic situations in the city that are maybe similar to this where left turns are allowed and it, it does create a problematic situation.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Sweets?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I'm going to support that motion. I would have supported a motion to approve the site plan with those two other conditions that I know the applicant doesn't want. I understand that. I'm persuaded by the Public Works argument here. A couple of other things just that trouble me a little bit about the application and the discussion that we're having. It's hard to, to vote on something with the possibility that housing may or may not come and first we heard traffic would be a bigger problem because of the apartments and then they have no parking at all. And so that's really, for me, I'm going to make that completely separate and just look at this project as though this is what it is and it will always be. I think there are businesses that are on streets where people can't make a left turn into them and I don't know if that's a business model issue or something else with that. And then also, I think that in this project, you know, there's a kind of a built-in convenience that no future project is going to get, which is that drive-through. And we won't be seeing any more things with drive-throughs. So that's, that's something I think that kind of goes in the applicant's favor toward the kind of business they want to have that other businesses in the future won't get. And that's, that's appropriate given the time where we are and when the application was put in. So, I'm not going to support the motion to deny it, but I also can't support the applicant's request to ditch those last couple of conditions.
Commissioners, further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to deny site plan review with the various traffic and circulation-related articulated findings from Commissioner Brown. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
CoGill?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Nipke here?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
That is five yeses and three noes.
That motion carries. With that, that concludes our business on item number one. Kimberly, are there any updates from staff?
Yes, we had two appeals that went to Z&amp;P last week from, I'm losing track of our meetings, but our September meeting. One was related to the Costco gas station. The zoning and planning committee of the city council is making a recommendation, a full council, to uphold the planning commission decision on that item as well as the appeal on the parking variance for the Center for the Performing Arts. And then from our last meeting, our October 7th meeting, we did receive an appeal of the Fullerton Flats project at 47th and Grand, thank you. And that will go forward to the next zoning and planning committee meeting and that was related to, I believe, just the site plan review or just the parking variance application and not the site plan review.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that, meeting is adjourned.